Good afternoon. I'm Senator Gary Daniels from District 11. Today, we will be holding a meeting of the Senate Finance Committee. Before we get started, I'll read through a checklist to ensure that the meeting we are holding is in compliance with the right to know law. As Chair of the Senate Finance Committee, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. In accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and selected legislative staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to the meeting on Zoom or YouTube and via phone by following the directions and links provided on the General Court website. We have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting in the Senate calendar. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are any problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email remotesenate@leg.state.nh.us or call 603-271-6931. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Finally, let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states hitherto presence, please also state where you are and if anyone else is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. I'll now call roll. Senator Rosenwald.
Good afternoon. Senator Cindy Rosenwald, District 13. I'm in the Senate chamber.
Senator Reagan. Senator DeLisandro.
Senator DeLisandro, District 20. I'm in the Senate chamber.
Senator Morse.
Senator Chuck Morse. I'm in the Senate chamber.
Senator Gaida and Senator Hennessy are currently out of the chamber, I believe, testifying on the bill, joining us shortly. And I'm Senator Gary Daniels, and I am in the chambers as well. I would now invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
... states of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under one individual with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to state that the agenda that was put out, we will be following that with just a couple notations. The university system and the community college system, which we had as last on the list, will not be taken up today. They'll be taken up at a future date, probably later this week. So just kind of keep your eyes and ears open for that. Secondly, we have received an updated recap sheet from LBA. We will be working from that sheet. If you have questions or recommended amendments, please contact LBA to get those ideas on the sheet so that when we go through them, we'll be able to address those at the same time. As we go through these, there may be items that we have questions on. If we have questions that cannot be answered by someone from the department who may be on, what we will do is put that on hold until we can get an answer from the department and bring that up at the next session after that. So I'd like to, as we go through this, just be recognized if you have any discussion regarding it and we'll get started. So the legislative branch. We have about a about a $4 million increase in that. Are there any questions regarding the legislative branch? Saying none, we'll go on to the exec. I'm sorry. Of the $4 million. I don't, I don't have, actually, I don't have any documentation on the legislative branch. And I'll recognize Mike Kane. Yeah, now I'll stand corrected. The figure that I gave you was the increase since the 1819 budget. It really did not change much from the 2021 budget. Back, yeah, very, very little change from the 2021 budget. Senator Morse.
Yeah, the 2021 adjusted authorized is exactly what 22 and 23 are. The what happened here was that what was presented to the House was probably, I don't know, Kane, if you have it, but it was probably 22 million when they talked about it in the House. And they, we went through and saw no reason to raise the budget above where we are right now. That's why it's exactly the same as what's authorized this year.
Any further questions? Going through the, actually, as we go through these, if you, if we don't have any questions, we probably could take votes to get on initially on the record as to whether we support or not support. And that will enable us to dispose of some things and concentrate more on some of the big ones coming. And that's, I guess that's one other thing I would like to add as far as questions. As we look down the road and we look to larger departments like Corrections, Health and Human Services, which are much more complex than the ones that we'll be going through today, if you have questions regarding those, let's see if we can get those out early to give the departments time to get the answers to those questions before we get to it. So is there, is there a motion then to? I'm sorry, Senator Gaida, what was that?
Move the House figures.
Okay, Senator Gaida moves the House figures on the legislative branch. Is there a second?
There is.
Oh, yeah. Senator Gaida, why don't we hold off until Senator Hennessy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to the executive branch. Again, the executive, executive branch is pretty close to I'm sorry, executive counsel, not branch. Thank you. Okay, so the figures that the, the House has looks like it's just a slight increase from, from the, actually, it's a little bit of a decrease in the first year, little bit of an increase in the second year. But still relatively flat. Questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, would it, would, it would help if, what page of the compare report each of these? And it may be somewhere that I'm not seeing.
If you look.
Oh, okay. Got it. Thank you.
Any questions on executive counsel or you need more time? Saying that, we will go, go on to the Land and Heritage, Land and Community Heritage Investment Program, or LCHIP. And Mr. Kane, do you have the increase on this since the last budget? Well, I think, you know, what I'm seeing is a significant drop in 2021. I'm guessing maybe that was because of COVID. But there's, there's only, I think, somewhere around just a little bit less than a million dollar increase over the 1819. Okay.
Gary, the, maybe she ran to get this, but on our sheets from every day, she wrote down the compare page. It's on, that one was 192.
So it looks, it looks like we're pretty flat on the on that. Any further questions on LCHIP? Chair will note that Senator Hennessy has, has joined us. And at this point, so that we can kind of go through, let's just double back to the legislative budget, which we said that it was flat. And Senator Gaida?
Mr. Chairman, I would move accepting the House figures for the legislative branch, and if it's okay, as well the executive counsel and LCHIP, if that's appropriate.
Okay. So there's a motion by Senator Gaida to accept the House figures on legislative branch, executive counsel and LCHIP. Sir, is there a second by Senator Reagan? Any discussion? There being none. Call roll. Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Gaida?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator DeLisandro?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Morse?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The motion carries. Our next one is the Community Development Finance Authority. And are there any questions on this? Senator Gaida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A note that shows that there's a 14.3% increase, and we're not certain unless we have some subsequent supplemental information whether, what was the reason for that increase.
Can LBA help us out? Probably have to take down the chair.
Good afternoon. This is Katie Easterly Marte with the Community Development Finance Authority.
Good afternoon, Katie. Did you hear the question?
I did. So the increase is due to the increase in federal funds. CDFA administers the Community Development Block Grant Program on behalf of the state of New Hampshire, and the, the funds have anticipated to be increased at the federal level. And so the increased request to the state aligns with that increase of federal funds.
Okay. Will, will those federal funds continue year after year?
So it's only an appropriation, it's a T-Hod appropriation, so it's an annual appropriation. So we, we have an anticipated, and we have a guaranteed amount, which is an increase for this year, starting on July 1st, and we will not have the exact amount on next year until the, until the fall, when that T-Hod bill comes out.
Okay, I think the, the question was going from 1819 to 2021, there was a 14.3% increase. And you're saying that those federal fund, those were federal funds that caused that increase, and now we're actually looking to add another $8,000 to that?
Yes. So the, the, the federal funds have been slowly increasing each year. So that means that this year, we, we have received an allocation of $9.2 million, which was an increase over, over last year. And we anticipated a, no increase between 2022 and 2023. And if there is an increase between 2022 and 2023, CDFA would, would raise the funds to, to, to make that difference. So we're asking the state to cover the required federal match for what we know will be the increased, required federal match due to the increased allocation coming to the state of New Hampshire for these projects. And again, these are public infrastructure projects, things like childcare centers that fund, serve low and moderate income households, water and sewer that allow economic development to be increased in communities. And these are projects requested by municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
In the handouts that you gave us, there was something in there about a federal required match. Does, does that match increase every year?
It only increases if the allocation of federal funds increase. So it is a percentage match, so it sort of rises if the allocation rises.
Okay, so, so we need to increase ours to match whatever rise they have. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Did you get, did you get the question?
I'm sorry, I did not.
You, turn them, you're gonna have to turn your mic on for them to hear.
What is the match? It's a percentage. What is it?
It's 3%. And then, but there's a portion that you can, you can expend on technical assistance, and then there's a portion on administration. And the first $100,000 needs to, needs to, is the, so it doesn't, so it's 3%, it can be expended on admin and technical assistance of the award, and the first $100,000 of the award has to be, has to be matched by the state unless the, unless the percentage is less than that. So in previous years, we hadn't bumped up against that maximum of 100,000. In this award, because of the increase in federal funds, we've bumped up against that federal, that federal 100,000. But we, I guess I only just, but we can also use a portion of the federal funds to provide technical assistance to our grave keys. So in addition to the $200,000 requested in the legislature, we can use some of the, some of the CDBG funds to actually support the administration and technical assistance up to 3%.
Any further questions? Senator Gaida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm not certain I understood. So what percentage of the total amount is the state required to provide? Is that 3%? Or is it only 3% allocated for admin and technical?
So 3% of the total of the award can be expended on administration and technical assistance, plus $100,000 per year commitment from the state, which is the required match.
Yeah, that's good. I need, that's all I needed. Thank you, sir.
Okay. In years past, we just hadn't met that, that max of 100,000 because our federal award was lower.
Any further questions? Notice that the, the House did not fund anything. Is that correct?
No, the House approved it at the fully requested amount. At least that was my impression from the meeting.
Maybe, maybe you can help us out, Mr. Kane. I'm looking, looking at the, the budget analysis. Thinking in 2223, the House has zero there. Mr. Chairman. Okay. Senator Gaida?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, looking at the compare report, it would appear the House is fully funded with 200,000.
Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you. So because there are no federal funds appropriated, will they be coming in through fiscal?
Laura?
Thank you. So how will we ever know what the state match has to be? I mean, the 200,000 presumably is a guess.
Further questions? Senator DeLisandro?
Mike, was that the ask?
200,000, correct.
Right.
And that's what they receive in the House.
Right, right. Governor request, Governor, House sent. Okay, great, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, we'll continue on to the next one right now until we have everyone back. The New Hampshire Retirement System. And I did have some questions on this. Noticed that there was a 41.5% increase in the 2021 budget compared to 18 and 19, and just wondered what caused the large increase. If there's someone from the retirement system, can you please raise your hand? If there's someone from the retirement system, can you please raise your hand? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Gerard Murphy with the New Hampshire Retirement System.
Thank you. Did you get the question?
Yeah, I believe I did. It's it's regarding the increase in the retirement system budget from the eighteen nineteen biennium to the twenty twenty one biennium. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the 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 most significant driver of that increase was the the beginning of our Pension Gold Version Three Upgrade Project. This is the the multi-year upgrade to our pension administration software. It wasn't in the budget eighteen nineteen. This was before we started the project. It was in the budget beginning in twenty and twenty one. And that's really the the lion's share of that increase. For instance, I believe that's a the the twenty twenty one increase over eighteen nineteen was seven point one million. And five point seven of that increase was related to the project.
It's a five point seven?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, are there any more questions on on the amount for the retirement system? Senator Gaida.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for taking my question. Do we expect this level of funding to be required for the foreseeable future? Is it costly maintaining that system or is this just the installation?
This is all implementation related, Senator Gaida. The schedule has us sort of finishing up with implementation in twenty twenty four. So at that point, those payments to, you know, the the project-related payments should come should be considerably decreased.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Okay, we we do have three bills. Actually, four bills. Oh, we have. I'm sorry. We have a let's take take up the three bills. There there are three bills. One of one of them will start with Senate Bill seventy two, which is relative to the state share of the retirement system contributions by employers. That is that is currently tabled pending an ITL motion. Is there any interest in in taking that and moving that to the budget? Yeah, I mean, I would say if if anyone's interested in doing that, let's put it in the form of a motion. Senator Rosenwald.
I'm confused. It's not in the budget.
It's it's on the table right now.
Right. But it's nothing we would have to take out of the budget, right?
It's nothing we would take out of the budget. I think what what you would do is take the cost of that and put it in the budget in the retirement system.
So would this be the time for me to move my amendment?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to move amendment one two nine three S, please, and request permission to speak to it.
Chair recognizes Senator Rosenwald. Well, is there a second on the amendment? Second by Senator De La Sandro. Chair recognizes Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This this amendment would institute one third of Senate Bill seventy two. There's been a big downshift to the cities and towns, mostly because of the required amortization. Combined with the reduced rate of return has, for my own community, downshifted millions of dollars to the local taxpayers of Nashua. So I I understand the Senate's reluctance to go through with fifteen percent of the state's former thirty percent share. And I ask that we pay five percent.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Jim. I echo the sentiment of of my colleague. You know, in the past, this has been a contribution that has been made by the state that was negated for a long period of time. And the burden has been put on the local municipalities. And this this year, that number is is significant, both for Nashua and certainly for Manchester. So this would this would help to some extent to alleviate that problem and help with the with the property tax burden that must be assumed by the local communities. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. Senator Hennessy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will not be supporting this amendment for the same reason that I did not support SB seventy two. And the reason is because as a state, we don't have control over local spending. And local other local towns don't have control over what their neighbors or their neighbor's part of the north or their neighbor's part of the south implement for their local spending. And so what would happen is the state would end up paying for towns that decide to implement vast increases in their spending, and that five percent would be five percent of a much bigger number. Additionally, we have bills before us that we that I would entertain putting into the budget that would help our local municipalities, including Senate Bill ninety nine.
Thank you. Further discussion? Senator, Senator Gaida, did you?
Yeah, I will not be supporting this amendment either for the reasons stated by my colleague from Littleton. It would not be right to expect the state to pick up the cost for the retirement systems miscalculations. That is, you know, the communities set rates of pay upon which are based, retirement compensation, and, you know, the communities should bear the cost of that. That's not downshifting. That's just simply fiscal responsibility. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. If I could just respond briefly to that. The retirement system has told us that the vast majority of the increase in costs is not caused by giving raises to local employees, but is caused by the requirement for amortization. I believe that is a state responsibility, so therefore I agree with the taxpayers of Nashua. This is a downshift. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? I think one thing we we have to acknowledge is, I believe that a couple of years ago, they they laid out a plan where the unfunded liability would be paid off in twenty thirty nine, if I have the year correct. Anytime we go and make changes to this, you know, whether it's to give a caller or or change things, then it it puts an extra burden on it because they haven't changed that date. You know, you've added you've added unfunded liability to it, but you haven't changed the date, which is going to cause an increase. And I I'm hearing that at the local community about the the increase going on. Keep in mind that as I believe back in two thousand ten to two thousand eleven, that the Governor Lynch took and pushed all all that back on the local communities. And, you know, so it's been like that for a good decade anyway. Any further discussion? Sing none. The motion on the floor is to approve Senate Bill seventy two. Excuse me, I'm sorry. The amendment two one two nine three S. Thank you. Sing no more discussion. We'll call roll. Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Gaida?
No.
Senator Reagan?
No.
Senator De La Sandro?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
No.
Senator Morse?
No.
And the chair votes no. The motion is defeated. Going on to Senate Bill one nineteen. It's relative to the ordinary death benefits in the retirement system. This was again tabled in the Senate with a pending motion of inexpedient to legislate four hundred and forty three thousand dollars of state expenditure increase in twenty twenty four and one point three four eight million of local expenditure in twenty twenty four. Need discussion or we have a motion to get this on?
I would move ITL, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Senator Gaida?
I would move ITL.
Motion by Senator Gaida that Senate Bill one nineteen be ITL. Is there second by Senator Reagan. Discussion. Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. I guess I'm confused as why we would need to do that since it's already tabled in the Senate with a pending motion of ITL. I'm not. I I just I'm sorry. I don't understand why we would need to take it up as part of this discussion when it's not in the budget currently.
It's not.
And it has not been moved to include it in the budget.
And we we can certainly we can certainly go that route. If there's no desire to pull it off the table, then we can just consider that. Or if you decide to go forward and do do an ITL, then that I I would say that as far as this committee is concerned, that that pretty much takes it off the table without an interest in bringing it back sometime later. That would that would be the only
It's a frustration to me that we were not able to get from the retirement system an accurate number of how often this situation comes up. I think they told Senator Hennessy that they were just calculating it as if everybody who is eligible for retirement benefits died before filling out the pre-selection form, which we know is not the case. So I have not submitted an amendment to bring it back this year because we need more information on that. But I I'm okay with leaving it on the table.
Thank you. Senator De La Sandro?
Just to follow up, in conversations with the the retirement system, it was it was
Luke, can you can you pull the mic closer?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sure. In discussions with the retirement system, it was really a a problem at point of entry when they weren't told what their options were. And as a result of that, people people suffered because it was their option to choose at the beginning. But but when they entered, the process wasn't followed properly. And they weren't told. As a result of that, some families suffer because they only get fifty percent of of the benefit when they were entitled to a hundred percent of the benefit. They're not asking for anything they weren't entitled to. The fact of the matter is, the the system was negligent in not telling them. And and they're going to improve that. Sure, they're going to improve it from that from this point on. But there are people who for for that for that moment of of negligence on the part of the system lose out. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Further discussion? Senator Gaida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I fully understand the concept that the retirement system should be responsible for informing people, but it's also incumbent upon the individual him or herself. Okay, in the sense of financial responsibility to oneself and one's family or loved ones or whatever, to check up on these things periodically and further to the collective bargaining units to remind employees that are approaching retirement that you need to take care of this. Okay? At some point, I don't know that it's proper for the state to pass a law. Okay, mandating that the state becomes responsible for the failure of personal responsibility or representational responsibilities in this situation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Morse?
Yeah, I'm just gonna make a suggestion. The, you know, and I don't know what's on every sheet coming up. But if someone's gonna move it as a law to pass, then we we could vote on it. If if no one's gonna move it, we'd save a lot of time not having votes. If it's, you know, but I mean, where this comes from and and Senator Rosenwald, he didn't serve with me on on this part of the budget. But everything that gets picked up that everybody's talking about that the chair thinks should be on these sheets, that's what he does. He puts them on the sheet. And so that we don't miss anything. And as for the things on the table in the Senate, which I'm sure you and I care about a lot of the healthcare stuff that's on the table. I'm sure they're in these documents somewhere because we had Josh pick up everything that was on the table and take it to LBA. So if we're just gonna vote on what's positive, I I think we probably have questions on every line here, because I have a question on one forty one, where it is and what it's doing. But the I think we only really have to vote on the ones that people want to pass.
Senator Rosenwald.
Thank you. And and that that was my understanding as well. I would just say one last thing about this topic. It is statutory language currently that somebody cannot make the selection until they're eligible for for full retirement benefits. So if we want people to be able to enroll and become members in this system and and pick their beneficiaries right away, we will have to make a change to the statute. We can do that. We can reexamine it next year. Which is, hopefully, we'll have better information on the actual numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I will share your frustration that we didn't really get the numbers. I think we were told by the retirement system that they don't keep those numbers. But also, my understanding is is just as you stated, when somebody has to fulfill requirements of time before they're eligible to retire. I don't know that it's necessarily a system breakdown. I didn't think we that we heard that. We did not hear that Human Services did not tell the the person that they needed to fill out a a form for retirement. I think what we heard was that, for whatever reason, the person did not fill one out. So that could have been that they were told and they just didn't do it or whatever. But I would submit to you that we we do have safety gates, not only in human resources, but as Senator Gaida mentioned, also with the union that should be tracking members of the union and making sure that that they get these forms filled out so that they get the benefits to which they are entitled. So if you want to withdraw the motion, we can
That was my next action, sir. I'd withdraw my motion of ITL.
Is withdrawn.
With concurrence of the second.
Thank you. We'll say that House Bill one forty one is I guess that's tabled in the Senate.
No, I think it's in the Senate right now.
I thought I thought it was in a committee.
Yeah, so I don't personally, I think if it's in a committee and it's a House bill, I prefer the Senate play it out at the House bill in the committee and not doing it in the budget unless we don't think that because Because if it's a House bill, we can concur or not concur, you know.
Right. Okay, and so since, since there still is that outstanding part of the retirement system, I think we'll leave that for a vote until later. We'll go on to the next one, which is the Treasury Department. Actually, we may wanna. We may want to hold off on this until we, we deal with the university and community colleges since that movement of the debt service line is dependent on whether the systems are kept separate or not.
And the municipal aid portion, the municipal bill that, that's, that we have the amendment, should we hold that for later? That's on the table.
On the way to the last piece of the memo.
It's, it's on the table in the Senate as we speak. So is, Mr. Chairman, is it your preference that we hold this till the end?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of your comments.
Okay, just the, the amendment that I am requesting, the municipal aid. Is it, is it your preference that we hold this until the end?
Oh, yeah, why, why don't we take it all up la- later when we decide, and that, that way we're not separating.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Board of Land and, Board of Tax and Land Appeals? And is there, is there anyone from the department that, that could shed some light on the increase? Because it looks like we're looking at a seven point one percent increase. You're muted, Michelle.
I do that often.
We all do.
What is your question? I'm sorry.
It, it looks like the, the appropriation for twenty-two, twenty-three is about a seven point one percent increase over the current biennium.
It is, and the reason for that is simply for things that we have no control over, salaries, benefits, and the rents. Other than that, there have been no changes, and some areas that actually have gone down. From fiscal twenty-one to twenty-two, we are asking for a four percent increase. And the rent alone has gone up fifty-one percent. And for fiscal twenty-three, we're asking for a three percent from twenty-two. And again, the rent has gone up from fiscal twenty by fifty-three percent. So it's merely the three items over which the board has no control over.
Okay, so if I heard you correctly, there's two rentals?
We have rental on, the two rentals, what I refer to with the two fiscal years, it's, it's one rent. But it has gone up from fifty-four thousand in fiscal twenty to seventy thousand for this fiscal year and up to eighty-two-eight for fiscal twenty-two and eighty-four thousand for fiscal twenty-three. And there have been no changes to the amount of space that we rent.
Okay, so essentially we're seeing a hundred percent increase.
We are seeing a large increase, yes.
Any questions? Senator Geida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at the line number zero four two, class number, additional fringe benefits. Can you explain what those are?
That's the post-retirement amount. And it's, it's a bill which we receive yearly for pretty much an unknown expense that we, we are aware of. It's, it's from prior employees, apparently, who have retired from the system and we have to pay our share yearly on that amount that's calculated by the Administrative Services.
Probably not, follow up?
Follow up?
Probably not within your, your purview or your area of expertise, but is there statutory authority for such a charge?
I am not sure. I imagine there is.
Okay, again, it's not on you.
I think the Department of Administrative Services would be better suited to answer that question.
Yeah, and I will address it to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kane? Did you have an outstanding question, Biona?
Okay.
Any further questions? A Board of Tax and Land Appeals? Is there a motion on that?
I, I would move it to use the House figures for the budget for B T L A.
And motion by Senator Geida, seconded by Senator Morse to use the House figures for the Board of Tax and Land Appeal. Any discussion?
Other than say that it appears that the increase in cost is, again, not caused by the, the Department of the Agency itself. It's simply external factors. And we need to be T L A to operate as they do a good job.
Okay. Any further discussion? There being none. The motion is to accept the House figures for Board of Tax and Land Appeals. Call roll, Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator De La Sando?
Yes.
Senator Morse?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, senators.
Thank you. Okay, boxing and wrestling.
I would move.
Senator De La Sando moves to approve.
Second.
Second by Senator Reagan. Senator Hennessy, did you? Okay. Senator Reagan? And it looks, it looks as though the House did not appropriate anything on this. So what happens in that case, Mr. Kane? Okay, any discussion? Senator Geida?
There's a question to, to Mr. Kane. It's presumptive that eleven sixty-two in actual twenty-twenty because of COVID and that we're somewhere near the seventy-three hundred or so fiscal twenty-twenty when adjusted authorized in the previous biennium?
Yes, correct. So twenty, you see the one thousand one hundred and sixty-two is due to be approved. The impact of COVID of the rest of twenty-one adjusted authorized since the act of appropriation.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Sing then, ready for the vote? Motion is to accept the House amounts on boxing and wrestling. Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator De La Sando?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Morse?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion carries. Wanted Developmental, Developmental Disabilities Council?
About to pass.
Senator Hennessy moves ought to pass.
Second.
Second by Senator Geida. Any discussion? Sing then. Call roll, Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator De La Sando?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Morse?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion carries. Bring on to Department of State. Have a few different things in here. First of all, let's, is anyone from the, from the State Department? On? Okay. Okay. Is L B A able to explain the, the eleven percent increase? The budget compared to the the last, the current budget, eleven, there was an eleven percent increase in from eighteen nineteen to twenty twenty-one? Okay. And there was, should we just skip over it until we have State Department in?
Yes, we'll have a base camp.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to the next one, which is banking.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Senator Reagan to approve the House numbers, seconded by Senator Geida. Discussion. There's an indication in there, the section two eighty-five put in by the House.
Yes, that was duly added by the House.
Okay, thank you. We had a mo, we've, have we, we had a motion on this, correct?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Sing then, we'll call roll. Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator De La Sando?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Morse?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries. Go on to the Department of Labor. You'll note there are five, five changes. Again, are all these put in by the House, or were there some by the governor as well? Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Do you like the change? I would move.
Move by Senator De La Sando to approve the House numbers. Is there a second? Second by Senator Reagan. Discussion. Senator Geida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask Mike Kane. Because I'm looking at the better than tenfold increase in transfers to D O I T. Whether there's a corresponding reduction in costs anywhere else in U I T's budget or somewhere else in the state budget that would offset the apparent transfer of O I T obligations and responsibilities to O I T within the Labor Department?
Further discussion?
I didn't hear an answer.
You didn't hear?
No.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that answer again, please?
Yes.
Oh, follow up? So is that installation costs? This is like a one-time charge, so to speak, for two or three years to get it installed? And then that, we would expect to see a significant reduction?
I believe it is, but I also think Commissioner Eric.
Commissioner, there you go.
Yes, I'm, I'm here. I'm, I'm afraid I didn't hear very much of the commentary, but I, I think I can explain the, the difference that's been identified by Senator Geida in that we are centralizing. In addition to the technology project that was described, we are centralizing costs in the commissioner's office because the funding is more advantageous to the state. So if you were to. So if you were to, if you were to look at that class line overall through the entire department, you'll see that it is level funded.
Further questions?
Again, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, whether I understand the answer. Commissioner Ken?
Yep.
The, the, the 1,332 and 1,344 in '22 and '23. Is that cost of equipment? We could expect that to go down? Or is that cost, that level of cost going to continue indefinitely because of the consolidation, if you will, of the OIT functions?
No, actually, what you are seeing there from, if you're looking at the page 378 and so say the 171,000 in fiscal '21 jumping to 1.332 million?
That's correct.
Right? Okay, that's because of the centralization of costs in the Commissioner's office. This is one accounting unit. So if you were to look at the inspection division for Class 27, the next accounting unit, it goes to $1 from a half a million. And the same, and the same occurs in the third accounting unit.
Okay, I see that now. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, Senator. I did want to alert the, the Finance Committee about a couple of things that appear in House Bill 2, Sections 126 and 128. Both of those happen to be also, the language is very, very close to two bills that have already passed both houses. And one of them has already been signed by the governor. Section 126. And so it's your pleasure, certainly, how, how to address that, but I wanted to alert you that both the House and Senate have passed very similar language to those two sections.
120, did you say 125 and 126?
No, 126.
Yeah.
And 1, and 128. I have, I have the bill numbers, if that's any help to you.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Sure. 126 is nearly identical to House Bill 301, which has been signed by the governor. And Section 128 is very similar to House Bill 261. Not yet signed, but it has gone to the governor for signature.
Thank you. Senator DeLisandro?
Would it, would it be duplicative of us to have this included or what, or should we strike these in, in light of the fact that they're law or they will be law?
Well, I think we could certainly strike Section 126. I wouldn't want to be presumptuous on 128. Yes. Okay, so the governor hasn't seen it yet. Okay. And again, I, I don't know that I would want to remove that. Yet not knowing what, you know, if the governor is going to do that or not, but we could take out Section 126.
So
Follow up?
I would, I would move that we withdraw or we strike Section 126 of House Bill 2.
Second. Second.
Motion by Senator DeLisandro, seconded by Senator Geida to strike Section 126. Any further discussion? Senator Hennessy?
I just want to confirm it doesn't have any financial impact that we need to include?
No.
Further discussion? Seeing none, then really what you will be voting on then is the House numbers with Sections 124, 125, 127, and 128 in House Bill 2. Ready for the vote? Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator DeLisandro?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Morse? Chair votes yes. Motion carries. The next one is the Public Employee Labor Relations Board. And I don't know if Mr. Ingersoll is there or not. There seemed to be, have been a 5.2% increase between the 1819 budget and 2021 and a 6.8% increase between the current budget and the proposed budget. So I wondered if somebody might be able to explain the 12% increase. Okay. We will, we'll hold off on on that one. Military Affairs and Veteran Services. First item on there. What, what is the status of Senate Bill 143? Has the House passed that? This was the incentive program for $25,000. Okay. And I think there's someone on from the department that might be able to give us a little bit of insight between on the 24.9% increase.
Sure, for the record, Warren Perry, Deputy Agent in General for the Department of Military Affairs and Veteran Services. So we're not tracking a 24% increase in the budget. Is that specific to the line that is associated with Senate Bill 143? We're tracking about a 4% increase for 20 for '22 and about a 6% increase for '23.
Okay, I because I, I had we're, we're going from 60.9 million in 2021 to 76.1 million in '22, '23.
We're tracking, I'm tracking 30, you know, in '20, we had 24, 24 million, 24.7 million and 21 36 million. And then we went to the House recommended budget of 37 million, which was a change of about 1.4 million. And that's for '22. And then in '23, the increase was about 2.3 million.
Okay. I think I'd like to put this, put this on hold until I can get the figures to match. You said you've got about a 4.3% increase, was it?
I'm sorry, sir. I said 4.9% increase for '22 and a 6.3 increase for '23 from, from fiscal year '21.
Was there something specific about those requests that caused the 11% increase?
Over time, yes, specifically new positions. So there are seven new positions. Three of them are 100% federally reimbursed in direct support of the National Guard. One is 75% federally reimbursed and then three general fund positions associated with the, the Veterans Bill Rights that was passed in the 2020 session. So that will drive most of the increase in our, in our budget for that, that time.
Okay. Any questions? Senator Geida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Warren, good to see you again.
Good to see you, Senator.
Was there, are there any commensurate reductions in any other agency or departments for those additional positions that are generally, general funded additions?
So not any, not any reductions like that. So when we went, when we testified and we got the governor's target, we were asked to make the reduction that he gave us, right? So he gave us a, a certain percentage less than our adjusted authorized for '20. We made that, we made that adjustment. So there were some reductions, but no reductions associated with the addition of these positions. Our reductions were based on his desire for us to be, I think, 10% less than '22 and something like 8.5% less than our adjusted authorized for '20 in FY '23.
Warren, those three positions, are they for providing veteran services?
Yes, sir. So there, there were, there were three, there were three or four specific requirements in the, in the language of the Veterans Bill Rights. Homelessness was part of it. Veterans training was part of it, managing some other programs. I can get you the, the exact details as we move forward, but, but there, those three generally funded positions are directly for supporting veterans and veteran issues.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have the, the language here on the incentive program, both in Senate Bill 143 and in House Bill 2. So we'll, we'll hold off and see what what happens with House Judiciary.
Mr. Chair, did you get an update on the status of that bill? I didn't, I wasn't able to hear Mr. Kane.
I, I had, I do not have the update.
So it's the executive session for Senate Bill 143 occurred in the House on 11, not 11, last week on Thursday, I believe. They amended the bill pretty heavily, but they left our portion, Part 12, intact. So it just depends on what comes back. So there was no, I don't think there's any risk of our portion failing, but there may be a risk of the entire bill having to go to Committee of Conference based on significant differences for the other parts of that omnibus limit legislation.
So one of the thing, one of the things that we may want to do is consider putting that language in House Bill 2. As the 143 is an omnibus bill. All right. So we'll, we'll, we'll put that one on hold. Let's go to Judicial Counsel. So for clarification, Mr. Kane, these things that are listed on the recap sheet are the things that are, that are in the budget now that the House put in? Or are they things that have been requested beyond the House numbers?
Beyond the House numbers, Senator.
Beyond the House numbers, okay. So we have three, three items. There, the Guiding and Ad Lightem. Termination of parental rights case probate. Total on that for the biennium is 483,900. Non CASA Guardian Ad Lightem, private services for children in abuse and neglect cases. That's 300,000 for the biennium. Services other than counsel, these are ancillary services and criminal or delinquency cases. And is there someone there from the department? If there's someone from the department, please raise your hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Um. Do you have questions? I'm, I'm the administrative assistant. My name is Sharon Hebert and I can reach Sarah Blodgett fairly quickly, but is there questions that you want me to ask her?
Like, I guess probably the first question is there, for these three asks, you have those are things that are already funded in the budget, but you have that additional funding. Is that correct?
Would you like me to get her? I, I can get her quickly on the phone and she said she can pop right into the meeting. Hold on, okay?
Sure.
Do we have page numbers for, for these inline numbers?
Hi, Sarah's gonna, Sarah Blodgett is calling in momentarily.
Okay.
Okay.
You're muted, Sarah. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry for the delay.
Okay. So we, we're just curious, you, you've asked for three items beyond the House funding. And I guess first of all, we wanted to know these additional monies to something that has already been proposed for these line items?
Yes, these were proposed as part of our additional prioritized need in our original budget submission. And these happened to be the three areas that I just went back to Fiscal Committee and Governor and that I just went back to Fiscal Committee and Governor and Counsel to ask for an additional appropriation.
How much did you overrun? What had been given for the current biennium? In other words, how much did you ask from the Fiscal Committee?
Right. Give me one second. So we requested an additional one hundred fifty thousand dollars for the non-CASA abuse and neglects. An additional five hundred thousand for ancillary non-counsel services. And an additional two hundred thousand for that probate Guardian Ed Lightem line, for a total of seven hundred thirty thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, and what did you say was for the ancillary services?
That was an additional five hundred thousand.
Okay. Any questions from the committee? And where can we find the line numbers on that?
The line numbers? The line numbers for the most for my request to fiscal?
Well, I guess probably where they would go in the budget.
I'm sorry, Senator, I could not, I couldn't make out what you just said.
Okay. Who asked the question? Senator Hennessy.
I found it, thank you.
You want, you found it? Okay, I guess we're all set on that. Any further questions?
She has the, if I remember, just a question. Sarah, you have the opportunity to go to fiscal if indeed you need extra money, correct?
That is correct, Senator DeLisandro. I do.
Okay. And the three items that you're asking for, was that ask made to the House?
It was.
It was made to the House?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Hennessy?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the budget of the Judicial Counsel as it was sent over to us from the House.
I couldn't hear.
It's hard to hear you, yes.
Since the Judicial Counsel can go to fiscal for additional funds, I'll move the budget as presented.
Okay. Senator Hennessy moves the figures of the House for Judicial Counsel. And I believe that includes the authorization for the Counsel to request additional funds from fiscal.
Second.
Second by Senator Geida. Any further discussion? Saying none. So Senator Geida.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I support the work of the Counsel, Sarah, but I think, given that you have that authority, I think in that we're, you have the ability to go after funds as you need them. I think that's the reason that I would support the House version of the budget figure. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Saying no further questions, we'll call roll. Senator Rosenwald?
No.
Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator DeLisandro?
No.
Senator Morse?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion passes four to three. The Insurance Department is next.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold off on this one.
Okay. So a quest to hold off on this one. We'll go to Peas Development.
I would move the Peas Development.
Senator DeLisandro moves the House figures on Peas Development, that's seconded by Senator Reagan. Any discussion? Saying none, you ready for the vote? Senator Geida, you have a question. I hear somebody say three seventy-two or something. Oh. Page nine eighty-one. If I recall, the presentation on this, that there's no effect on the general funds on this, that the budget is basically paid for by fees from people using what?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, saying no more questions, we'll call roll. Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator DeLisandro?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Morse? Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Fishing game is next. On page six ninety-one. I had a question regarding the eight point three percent proposed increase in the budget. I don't know if anyone is on from the department. If they are, could you please raise your hand? Let's see one. You're muted, Scott.
Okay, is that?
You're good, thank you. So just a question on the increase. Why that amount? Something significant in there that, or something unusual that's causing that?
Could you repeat that, please?
I'm sorry. Oh, you repeat?
Yes, please.
I see there's about an eight point three percent increase in the budget, and I was wondering what was accounting for that increase? Well, we've got CPI plus population growth down around four point three.
Eight point three percent from our current twenty-one to twenty-two? Is that what you're looking at?
From the twenty twenty-one budget to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Oh, because twenty is actual spent, current is what we're authorized, and then twenty-two and twenty-three is what we put in for.
Okay, so. Twenty is actual, is that what you're saying?
Yes, fiscal year twenty is actual, so that already represents what we have lapsed. Fiscal year twenty-one is our current budget of what we are authorized, which does not represent what we are going to lapse, which will be significant due to the hiring freeze that was put in place by the governor for the past nine to ten months. In our fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, there were no increases of any programs or personnel. And as you are probably aware, fiscal year twenty-three, there is a twenty-seventh pay period, which only happens about every ten years.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Senator DeLisandro.
Just a question and a comment. So really, the twenty to twenty-one authorized is not really the spend. So the lapse, which will be reported, would certainly reduce that and will also reduce the percentage increase, correct?
Absolutely.
So we're figuring.
Senator DeLisandro, yes.
We're figuring on wrong numbers when we talk about the percentage.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank. And you attribute this to the hiring freeze, which was in place for most of the year? And what is your ability to fill those positions at the present time?
We are currently filling them. We have filled a few, and we are in the process of filling the rest of them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. When you say that you have filled a few, have you got a specific number? Because my notes said you had one hundred ninety-two authorized. Nine of those were unfunded.
That's correct. We are not filling any of the unfunded positions, of course. We are only filling funded positions that became vacant or were vacant during the hiring freeze.
Okay, so they've only been vacant over the last year?
Correct.
I would move the Fishing Game Department.
Okay. Senator DeLisandro moves the adoption of the House figures on Fishing Game. Is there a second? Second by Senator Rosenwald. Senator Geida, you recognize?
Yes. I'm looking at the general fund ask, and it goes from one point eight five one million in twenty twenty-one adjusted authorized to five hundred ninety-eight thousand governor and House, and six forty-nine, basically, governor and House for twenty-three. Okay, how do you explain that substantial decrease in the general fund ask? Is that because of an increase in fees from licenses and stuff, or how?
Absolutely not. Right at the beginning of the governor's, at the agency phase of the budget, we were provided a number by the governor's office that we could not exceed in general funds. And that number was six hundred thousand dollars in each year of the biennium. And for the second year of the biennium, it was increased slightly due to the twenty-seventh pay period.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Motion on the floor is to accept the House figures on Fishing Game. Ready for the vote? Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Geida?
Yes.
Senator Reagan?
Yes.
Senator DeLisandro?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yeah.
Senator Morse?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going on to the Veterans Home? Is there anyone from the Veterans Home? And I see the Commandant has her hand up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Senator. How are you today?
Very well, thank you.
Great.
So I guess the first question, it looked like there was somewhere around an eleven point seven percent increase.
Sure. At the New Hampshire Veterans Home, as you know, we have some unfunded positions that we had used in twenty-one to fund what we had hoped to be is temporary agency help. And that would be on page, if you're looking at the compare house to the governor, is thirteen eighty-one. You'll see that Class ten is down in fiscal year twenty-one compared to twenty-two, as well as those associated benefit numbers. And if you look at Class one oh one, you'll see the almost one point seven million dollars. In the new twenty-two and the twenty-three budget, we decided to fund those positions again and reduce the amount to the medical payments to providers, simply because the agency contract was unable to provide the number of LNA's and RNs that we were seeking. So we had hoped to continue to try to get those vacancies filled using our own resources. And so when you're, the medical payments to providers, there's no associated benefits with that. So the benefits would increase as we asked for those positions to be funded in Class ten. So Class sixty went up in association with those requested funded positions. Does that answer your question, sir?
I believe so. I mean, I haven't had a chance to go through all the figures, but I can certainly see that there's a million dollar difference between twenty-two and twenty-three.
Right.
And significantly up from the twenty twenty actual.
Right. And again, what we had appropriated there just wasn't able to be spent because the temporary in agency contract that we had, they were simply unable to provide LNA's and RNs for us. So we used our own staff with overtime.
Okay. Any further questions? Senator Geida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you share the status of your manning levels right now? Number of beds that are available, number of beds that you're allowed because of staffing limitations and so forth? Just give an overview real quickly.
Sure. Currently, we have approximately a hundred veterans living with us today. We have the budget to get up two hundred and twenty-five beds. We are currently actively seeking thirty-three vacancies in order for our numbers to get up that high. Of course, we are adding admissions as well. Excuse me. Currently, we are adding admissions every single week. The county COVID numbers are down low enough that we're able to do admissions from the community into the home. So we're hoping that within the next few months, we'll be up closer to the two hundred of previous years. And again, we are currently looking for thirty-four positions, of which approximately are twenty LNA's and the other is a mix of LPNs, social workers, and RNs.
Follow up. Hey, do you have a waiting list?
Yes, sir. We have approximately twenty people waiting to get into the TAR and WELCH, so those are scheduled out. We have approximately thirteen waiting to get into the Life Enhancement Dementia Unit. And again, those are, we actually have them scheduled out for the next couple of months. We have seventy-two active applications that we're working on as quickly as we possibly can in order to get those veterans in need into beds in the House.
Thanks for what you do and on behalf of the veterans.
Thank you, sir.
Job well done. Thank you.
Senator Rosenwald?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have an amendment which LBA was holding for an HHS section, but it does affect the Veterans Home. And so I don't know if you want to discuss it today, but it's to insert the language relative to the study of the Veterans Home and nursing homes that the Senate passed unanimously twice earlier this session. It's an appropriation from federal funds. So I don't know if you think it's appropriate to discuss it today or when we get to HHS more broadly.
If it's part of the HHS budget also?
Yes.
Okay, so I would say like we did with the previous ones. Okay, so I, I would say like we did with the previous ones, let's hold off.
Okay, thank you.
On that. I do see that there, Section 111 relative to per diem, that this section was redundant with House Bill 1 footnote and can be deleted.
If you're looking for a motion, I would make that.
Okay, so a motion by Senator Rosenwald to delete Section 111 in House Bill 2.
Second.
Seconded by Senator Guyda. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call roll. Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Guyda?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator DeLisandro?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Morse? The chair votes yes. Motion carries. And then there's another notation in there, sections 112 and 13 that allows transfers from salary and benefits. So at this point in time, then, we, we will put this off and take, go back to that one. We take it up in Health and Human Services.
Okay.
Next section is Police Standards and Training.
I would move the item.
Senator DeLisandro moves the House figures on Police Standards and Training. Is there a second? Page 1380.
Veterans Home.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yes.
Seconded by Senator Rosenwald. Page 1380.
1521.
1521.
1521. No, I'm looking at the wrong sheet. Sorry about that. 1521. And I guess the first, first question we'd have is, there seemed to be a significant increase between the 2021 budget and the 2223. Maybe you could shed some light on that?
Mr. Chair and members of the committee, John Skipper, Director of Police Standards and Training. And specifically, Mr. Chair, I'm just looking for a, a kind of an executive summary on the, on that delta?
Yeah, just maybe justification as to why, why, why the large proposal?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Really, this increase reflects specific initiatives to address those mandates that were set forth by the governor through his executive order and as identified by the LEAC Commission. Specifically, these address, in totality, this number comes from the purchase and then annual subscription for a record management system, training management system. This also addresses the addition of two full-time positions and two part-time positions. The full-time position would be one training specialist, and the other full-time position would be an instructional design curriculum development person. And then two part-time training specialists. And then we also increased the line that allows us to bring in third-party vendors to deliver in-service training. And then finally, there was an increase in the training side under 102, Class 102. That money was specifically added by the governor at the request of myself and Director Ken Norton of NAMI. And that, that appropriation would be specifically to fund crisis intervention training for in-service police officers. So all of those additions reflect, come together for that 32% increase.
Was, was everything that the governor had proposed kept in by the House?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move the item.
Senator DeLisandro moves the adoption of the House figures on Police Standards and Training.
Second.
Seconded by Senator Guyda. Any discussion? There being none, we'll call roll. Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Guyda?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator DeLisandro?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Morse? Chair votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Senator Hennessy?
If you want to reconsider the Insurance Department, my questions have been cleared up. I initially thought they needed additional money for an audit, and I found out that they do not.
Right. Let's, let's jump back to insurance. And I believe that we did, we did get an email. If you recall, during the presentation of their budget, it was mentioned that they needed an extra $160,000 to an LBA, to do an LBA, a 10-year LBA audit. There was a subsequent email that was sent out to clarify that they did not use that money.
Move on to pass.
Motion by Senator Hennessy to adopt the House figures for the Insur- Insurance Department that's seconded by Senator Guyda. Any discussion? I guess, is there someone from the department? Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Just a quick question regarding the 11.2% increase as to what's entailed in that?
Yeah, I think, I think much like a previous speaker, that was actual 20, you're, you're, you're comparing actual 2020. If you look at our, our budget, budget over budget, it's a negative increase for '22 and a 3% increase for '23.
Okay.
Obviously, I'm comparing that to authorized '21. For a negative point, 818 for '22, and a, and that's point 818.
Okay.
Positive 3.3.
Now, are there any other questions? Seeing on the motion before us is to adopt the House figures for the Insurance Department. We'll call roll. Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Guyda?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator DeLisandro?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Morse? Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you as well. And we'll go to the Lottery Commission. 1517.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Members of the committee, Charlie McIntyre from the Lottery.
Good afternoon, Charlie. Okay, so I guess. Okay, so we, we would need to get that House Bill 2 amendment to pay off the outstanding mortgage. And then you've got your positions for historical horse racing.
Yes, sir. That's assuming that it obviously passes and the governor signed it, which we assume it will and going forward, to fund the positions for next year and then perpetuity.
Senator Morse?
Sure. Charlie, did you, did the House put those positions in? Did they amend the bill over there?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I know certainly I was asked to put it as part of the budget process from LBA staff. When they asked us regarding a fiscal note, we made the original fiscal note request, but I don't think we specific, we had specific positions or funding. And so that came later in the process. So I don't think they did.
That is correct. The House did not include the provisions, although they did have already adjusted revenue estimates on the circle statement. So this would be just a technical, basically, change to section, the fund those positions, but there would be no impact on federal fund application.
So wouldn't, this isn't a $738,000 expense?
It is, but it's not going to be factored.
Further questions? Senator Guyda?
Comment, Mr. Chairman, with respect to Senate Bill 112 and House Bill 626, discussions with the House Ways and Means, they would prefer, and Senator French, who's the sponsor of 112, is in accord with this, that we pass House Bill 626 and remove the provisions for horse racing from House Bill 2.
And that's a request of the House?
Yes.
Could that be repeated, please? I couldn't hear.
I'm not sure I can say it all in one breath. So with respect to House Bill 626 and Senate Bill 112, which are essentially the same, a few minor technical differences, but nothing of any consequence, the House requests that we pass House Bill 626. Senator French is in accord with not passing Senate Bill 112, that the House will hold that, and we can remove the House Bill 626 language from House Bill 2, their preference being to pass the bill.
Okay, has that, that hasn't gone all the way through the process yet? So I, I would say we hold on to it for right now. Senator Morse?
But is this still in your committee? Is this still in, where, where is this?
We passed 626.
What do you pass?
So where is 626 right now?
Is it tabled?
I believe it's in the governor's office.
Oh.
Yeah, I thought it was sailed already.
Okay, then that's fine. Then we want to remove provisions of 112, move anything 626 related from House Bill 2. I'm going to bring in an amendment that authorizes one more historical racing entity which exists and is being audited as we speak to participate in that process. The reason for the three-year hiatus was to prevent a deluge, so that the department could go ahead and get it, get it running properly. This one additional was already in existence. What we're going to do is change the effective date for May, I'm sorry, the, the date of consideration from May 1 of 2020 to May of 2021. That's the only House Bill 2 change. That will be relative to historic horse racing. And I confirm this with Val King as well as with the House.
Okay. Like, like the other before, I prefer not to take any action on this until the governor has actually signed those bills.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion on the lottery? Okay. So then on other ones that we have yet to address now, are there any outstanding questions that anyone would like to pose to LBA? I would say if there are none, write off, then certainly if you come up with them. Was there a hand up?
Can we just review what we put on?
What, what's on hold?
I think it's that or retirement system.
Right. Yes, things that we did not address yet are the retirement system, the Treasury Department, State Department, Department of Military Affairs and Veterans Services, Insurance Department, Veterans Home. We did insurance.
We did insurance.
We, sorry, that's from the earlier one. Veterans Home and Lottery Commission.
Did we do public and employee labor relations?
No.
Nope, missed that one too. We're holding that one also. Yeah. Yes. I thought we did veterans. Yeah, I'm quite sure with. No, I don't, I don't have anything marked. No vote? CDFA?
No, Chuck wasn't in the room, so that's why we didn't vote.
Thank you.
I would move CDFA with the House numbers.
Motion by Senator Guyda to move, to adopt the, the House figures for Community Development Finance Authority. Seconded by Senator Reagan. Any further discussion on this? There being none, we'll call roll. Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
Senator Guyda?
Yes.
Senator Reagan? Senator DeLisandro?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Morse?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Looks like there's, it looks like there's six. Seven, seven that we did not address.
Well, plus the two that's the bottom line.
We took the, took those off. Okay. So again, if you have, if you have questions, please, please send them to LBA. They will make sure that they get them on a sheet, which will be updated for the next time we address these. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Senator Morse?
Yep, the packet that we have in front of us for today, is there a packet available for tomorrow yet?
Not yet. We'll get one as soon as, soon as we can, though. Senator Rosenwald?
Yes.
This is to adjourn. Senator Guyda?
Yep.
Senator Reagan? Senator DeLisandro?
Yes.
Senator Hennessy?
Yes.
Senator Morse?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and we are adjourned.